Thank you. Good evening. We've already opened the meeting before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session and I do apologize, our executive session took considerably longer than we intended, but there was some unfinished work we had to complete. Thank you so much for your patience. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public, however, can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. It will also be, it's being livestreamed now. It'll also be recorded and available on MCTV and our website. If you are joining us in the Zoom audience, welcome, but please remember to keep your video and your microphone turned off during the meeting. Thank you. And welcome all. We have opportunities for public participation under policy BEDH, which has been reinstated to hold this participation remotely, but no one has indicated this evening that they wanted to participate. In the future, remember that you are welcome to just notify Jennifer Lively, our secretary, and she will give you the link and the information. Okay, important events. Upcoming and school committee attended, I believe. Brian?
Get your T-shirt there, Big Spill.
Yeah, Tina did a nice job of sending me a text to indicate I was muted, so. So the pandemic response advisory committee will be meeting for the next two Wednesdays. The next meeting is tomorrow at 4:15 and there'll be some topics that we'll want to discuss, including testing. I wanted to remind folks that tomorrow, Wednesday, January 13th is an early release day for all district schools for professional development for staff and that there is no school in the district on Monday, January 18th. As the nation celebrates Martin Luther King Day, there is also no school for students in the district on Friday, January 29th, which is the district's turnaround day. I also wanted to share that the Montague Youth Services Librarian, Angela Ravati Leonard, has shared a winter reading program. I've asked principals to share the information in newsletters and on the website. Families interested in sharing the events on the winter reading program with their kids can also contact the town libraries or visit their website, and the program includes events for young children, teens, and adults. At Gill Elementary School, school council meets this Thursday, January 14th at 3:30 PM, and there'll be an all-school meeting held on January 27th at 11:30 AM. At Sheffield Elementary School, school council also meets on Thursday, January 14th at 3:30 PM, and there's a Friends of Sheffield meeting on Wednesday, January 20th at 4:45. At Hillcrest Elementary, there'll be a Friends of Hillcrest meeting on Wednesday, January 20th at 5:00 PM. And those are the events across the district and things that have been shared in the community that I wanted to share with the committee.
Thank you. We have a student representative report, and I believe Haley is with us this evening. Haley Bastarash?
I'm here. Yes, thank you. So on a state level, things are much different this year. Normally, we would do an excellence book. Our E-board would bring that to the state council for our Hyannis Conference. We can't do that this year, but we are making a spellbook. Our theme is magic. So we are just creating a way to show what we've been doing throughout the year, and we'll be able to bring that to the state digitally. So that's really nice. We're working on that. Because of the pandemic, we haven't been able to do a lot of the stuff we typically would. So we're just doing a lot of connecting within our council, talking to each other, checking in. So that's been nice. And I'm excited to say that some classes are beginning to fundraise. I don't really have a lot of information on that, but I thought that would be nice to hear that classes are starting to get the ball rolling with that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. If I could ask you when fundraisers are starting, if either you or our other rep could just let us know what fundraising is happening, this is a good way to get it out, both to the committee and the public of things they could do to help support the classes?
Yeah, I can certainly tell classes to, tell us, and we can tell you or whatever. I know that right now there aren't currently any fundraisers, but I believe the junior class might be having one in the few next coming months. So we will certainly keep you in the loop with that.
Yeah, and feel free to communicate that stuff with me too, because if there's something that students want to get out with regard to fundraisers or activities that they're putting on, I'm more than happy to add them to weekly letters that I'll send out to the community so that we can get it out across the community. Okay?
Okay, I certainly appreciate that. Thank you for letting me know.
Thanks, Haley.
Right, and thank you for your input. We always appreciate it.
Excuse me, Jane?
Yes, Jimmy. Oh, hi.
Hi there. I've been on since you called this part, the public part, to order. And I just wanted you to know that I'm sitting on the side.
Oh, thank you. That's wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you ever so much. Happy New Year to everyone.
Yes, you too. Okay, superintendent's report. Brian, that's you again.
So no change in the update from the state or the commissioner. Again, on December 26th, Governor Baker did increase the restrictions on the number of businesses in the economy. There are significant changes in capacity limits that includes restaurants, gyms, theaters, laboratories.
Okay.
Other, and other close contact personal services. These restrictions at this particular point have not been changed and are due to continue through at least January 24th. One of the things that is positive in the state is that even though the state hospital capacity right now is at 84%, that that number has been declining. So we're hopeful that that declining number will result, hopefully, in some thoughtful release of restrictions, but of course, the state and the Department of Public Health are very carefully going to watch for a post-holiday wave of increase in virus transmission in communities. As far as our local communities, Greenfield is a town municipality that's in the yellow with 54 cases and 3.26% positivity. Our case count in Montague continues to decline, but with a 4.22% positivity rate, Montague still remains in the red and is identified as a high-risk community. And locally, orange is also in the red with 35 index cases in the last 14 days and a percent positivity for testing of 5.42%. Heath will be able to chime in a little bit here. I provided the school committee and did send out to the entire community the updated air exchange reports. It's a good opportunity to once again thank the towns for the contributions that they made to helping us to nearly complete the renovation and repairs to our HVAC system. These systems now should function with maintenance probably better than they have since they were put in initially to the buildings. And when we combine that with air purifiers deployed throughout the buildings, that we believe that our buildings are very safe and ready to receive students. We received, and I did share with the entire school community, the updated air exchange reports for the three elementary schools for Gill, Hillcrest, and Sheffield. There is still some work going on at the high school. And at this particular point, if I could ask Keith to give us a little update on what's going on at the high school and what we can anticipate in terms of the timeline for completion of that work?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
So at the high school, we've completed everything and all the other schools. The only thing I think we're waiting for is a couple of ventilation units for, I think, Hillcrest. And basically, all the duct work for that particular unit has already been run to basically get as much of the legwork out of the way before the actual unit comes in that will be hooked up to the duct work. So when that does arrive, because that's something that's in high demand and short supply, when those arrive, we'll be able to just put them right in, because all the duct work and electrical work's already been done. As far as at the high school, we had a building management capital project that was started before I was hired a couple of years ago. We had to put that back out. It's been a long process. So the major portions of that is done. We're going through the final stages of it tomorrow morning where all of my staff is getting trained on it. And then we're going to go through the entire building management system, because during the course of the project, of course, it identified when we had new hardware, new software put in and new hardware, it identified 47 additional problems throughout the building. A lot of them are fan statuses, won't respond in some of the classrooms. There's no replies to a heating coil in one of the classrooms. So it's, they're all very small fixable things, but we need to figure out if it's something that's mechanical or if it's something that the computer company who did the BMS upgrade needs to look into it farther. Either way, the work that's shown up in these errors was not part of the BMS project. So it's going to be something separate that we're going to have to settle. Once the BMS project is all done, and the last part of the BMS project is tomorrow when we get our training, and then we just have to verify with them that none of this is a result from the upgrade. After we determine that, we'll be able to go down this list, which Jamrock, who's done all of our upgrades, they've already got this list. It's already on their radar. They may possibly be stopping by as early as tomorrow morning to start working through some of these errors as well, but they're going to wait until after we've done our diagnostic tomorrow morning during the training to figure out how many of these are actually still errors before they start to do the repairs. And then whatever they can't fix, SNE, who did the BMS upgrade, will start to go through and do some technical repairs on all of these. So I'm confident within a week from tomorrow, we should have most of these issues done, at which point then we can retest the building, because if we retest the building now, some of these rooms that the fan has failed or the communication to the fan has failed, we're not going to get any air exchanges. We're not going to get the accurate air exchanges because of that error, whether it's hardware or computers. So next week, once all these are done, Jamrock will be able to come in and do a full building test, and then we can get a new report and then figure out what areas of the building, if any, need additional work, which I'm really hoping they don't need any more work. But that's the status of the high school. It was kind of hopeful that once we got this new computer system going, we weren't going to really have any errors. And then as soon as we got everything plugged up, we all of a sudden saw these red dashes start going across all the rooms as things were booting up, which is something you don't want to see when you put $100,000-plus building management system into your building. But either way, we're in the process of getting it fully on the mend. And like I said, I'm pretty confident by this time next week, as quick as these two companies are moving, because I've given them the potential timeframes of what we're looking at for having students return. They said that they're going to get in there and do everything they can to get all the work done that they need to get done. So we get the building retested and go forward.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Heath while he's here? Okay.
Thank you for everything you're doing, Heath. It really helps.
Thank you very much, Heath. I appreciate you coming tonight.
Have a good night.
You too. As far as staffing, we're going to have to begin the process of hiring for the last few positions that we have left open. The two medical waiting room positions, as well as the district food services director, shared special education teacher between Gill and the middle school, is posted, and we're in the process of interviewing. And we are still looking for a long-term substitute power professional for Sheffield Elementary School. So if you know anybody out there who might be interested in any of those positions, please encourage them to apply. I just wanted to share some additional pandemic-related information. I'll send out new information regarding testing in a separate email prior to the email that I would send out at the end of the week. This will also include information about food service, but there are a number of testing centers that have opened up in the area. I had just received one recently from a parent in an email, and then subsequently also Haley shared the same thing with me a few moments ago. So I will add those to an email and continue to encourage families to go out and get tested. I do also want to take the time to say thank you to the families of our school district that even while we are in remote, it has been very helpful to us to be able to track cases and work with the local board of health, that even while we're in remote, the parents have been calling their school nurses to report cases in their homes. And that's incredibly helpful and I think really testifies to how hard this community is willing to work to keep everybody safe. And I'm really appreciative of the time and effort that parents have put into communicating with one another and with the schools to help keep everybody safe. So I would encourage families to please keep that up and please keep in touch with us about what's going on. It helps us to protect one another. I do also want to add that I had shared with the community right now, a tentative return for Phase 1 students for January 25th will be contingent upon the reading of the data on Thursday night as to whether or not we stay on that timeline. So I'll be providing that update on Friday morning. I do also want to thank a couple of parents who had sent in requests for additional and more detailed information in addition to the thresholds that we use for decision-making, and I will add that information to the next communication that I send out regarding the learning model that the district will use. And thank you to those parents for taking the time and making those requests for information. I did also want to share at the request of some school committee members, what local schools are doing. Frontier and Hampshire Regional are both in full hybrid. Franklin County Tech is in a 25% hybrid, so they're bringing their students in, you know, one grade per day, because Montague is a high-risk community. So they've just reduced the number of students that they have on campus. Instead of having 50% at a time, they only have 25% at a time. Greenfield is remote with no apparent date to bring students on campus. Ware is in hybrid. East Hampton is fully remote. Pioneer is fully remote. Amherst is fully remote. Maher is fully remote, but hoping to return to hybrid on January 25th. Mohawk has small priority populations, hoping to return to hybrid on January 29th. Athol has priority populations in each of their schools, despite the fact that they are a red community. They are hoping to return to hybrid on January, not 29th, January 19th. And South Hadley is currently remote. They have been remote since the beginning and hoping to return to hybrid on January 25th. So that's what I was able to gather from regional superintendents. And as we go through from school committee meeting to school committee meeting, I will try to add in what other schools are doing to my report.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, thank you, Brian. Business and operations report. Joanne, please.
So I have a few things for you. I have the operating statement and expenditure report. So as I've been saying since last March, I'm not as worried about fiscal '21 as I am about fiscal '22. And as I'm putting together the operating statement in the fiscal '22 budget, it's becoming even more clear. So the fiscal '21, in fiscal '21, our finances are looking pretty good. We haven't filled all of the positions that we had open. The buildings are not in use, and so we're having some savings for heat, for substitutes. You know, we are seeing savings here and there. And we've had a couple of out-of-district placements that we brought the students back to the district. And so we had a savings there. The school choice numbers just came out, and those numbers are lower as well. So our school choice out, we have about, I believe it was 30 less students than we had last year. So our expense is going to be less on that. So what my recommendation is, is that we pre-purchase some of the items. If we're not going to get the revenue we need in fiscal '22, we should make some pre-purchases using the surplus that we have in fiscal '21 to help balance next year's budget. So the operating statement's in your packet. The other recommendation I have is that we move some transportation revenue into the transportation revolving account, and that'll help us reduce the fiscal '22 budget. So I've put that into the operating statement here, and that's why you see a reduction in revenue. We can't make the adjustment just yet, because we actually need to have the money before we can transfer it to that revolving account. We didn't receive it from the state yet. So I'll have to do that later on, once we do have it. The other recommendation I have, and I show this on the operating statement at the bottom, and that bottom section is to leave school choice revolving funds in school choice revolving. So we receive school choice revolving funds from revenues we receive for students that choose to come to the district. And then we spend that money to support our budget, to pay for staff, to support, you know, extra purchases that we need to make for those students. And so you can see the ending balance there is just over $1 million, and that's what would flow into next year to use. And the recommendation, I think, on the budget is to use $600,000 of that. But next year, if we get another 600 in, it'll just be a running balance that we'll have there. We also have savings in accounts like athletics. Transportation, we're probably, we have some special ed transportation savings, but we're using a lot of our regular ed buses right now to transport our food, to transport students to out-of-district, and then hopefully to bring kids to the hybrid. So right now, I'm anticipating the end of year balance will be about $260,000 going into E&amp;D. That'll increase our E&amp;D, and that takes into account about $300,000 helping the fiscal '22 budget. Also included in your packet is an expenditure report that shows the line-by-line expenses. And if anybody has any questions on those, you know, feel free to give me a call. There, some things are not encumbered, so you might look at something like our debt payments, our capital debt, the payments for the windows at Sheffield are the payments for the high school renovation. And those aren't encumbered, and so you'll see the full balance there. Those are items that get fully paid. Our benefits lines don't get encumbered. We just pay them monthly. And so at the end of the year, we'll have fully paid it. But you see the encumbrance there now. So don't panic that we have a lot of money there. We have a plan for how that's being spent. Does anyone have any questions about the operating statement or the expenditure report? Oh, one other thing that I did want to add is the ESER grant. So we received two CARES Act grant funding directly for the district. One of them is the CARES Act funding, and that was the reopening one. And that one, we've spent the majority of the money buying all the PPE and the barriers. The other grant is the ESER grant, and that's money that we haven't really spent a lot of yet, and it's a two-year grant. Well, now, I guess they're both two-year grants, but one of them's almost all spent. So one of them, we haven't spent very much of. It's intended to pay for our sanitizing custodians and to pay for our extra nurses in that type of position. So as much money as we can save in that ESER grant, we can also use that for next year, because we may need the sanitizing position still next year. We may need the nurses for the waiting rooms, the extra busing. We may need extra busing. Those are all things that we may need in fiscal '22 that we're not planning on. So as much money as we can save in the ESER fund, we will save for next year as well. Any questions? Okay, E&amp;D certification. I've been in touch with the DOR this year, this week, and they did not yet certify our E&amp;D, but hopefully in the next two weeks. It's all submitted. It's been submitted since October. But the DOR has to do the towns before they can do regions. If they don't get to it immediately when we submit it, and because the Gill budget wasn't approved until almost December, it got pushed back to the back burner. So it came back to the forefront for them. My direct contact has done everything he needed to do for it, and he's moved it on to the supervision. So we're just waiting to hear back from them. I have some notes on the fiscal '22 budget, but I can wait until the budget presentation for that. MSBA has not put out the invitation for the accelerated repair just yet, but I'm looking for it for the Gill roof. So we've applied, I believe, four years now, so maybe this year. You know, we can play one more time if Gill decides they want to keep applying for it, and we'll see what happens with that. And food services, I hope you all saw the article in the Montague Reporter about the food services department. It's been serving about 250 to 300 students daily since the meals, since the schools were closed in March. And the only gap in service came on the December holiday break. And so at that time, we decided to use the Dean's Beans donations that they had made and fill grocery bags to give to all the families to supplement the missing meals during that time. So our caf series staff, led by our managers, Leona Pleasant and Aneer, Michelle Cludier and Mary Savinsky have done a great job. They've been changing up the menu in recent weeks, trying to get more variety into the student lunches. And they've come up with ideas that they can use some surplus food that they have in stock in the buildings to save on money. And they've also looked at different packaging to help with the distribution. So the staff, all the cafeteria staff, they've been working in our building since March. You know, some of them worked during the summer. Some different people worked during the summer, but they've been nonstop in the buildings and have been back out on buses since we got back to school in September, handing out meals. And they've just put in great effort, and, you know, we really appreciate everything they've done for the families to make sure that they're getting the meals that they need in this time. So we applaud them for everything they've done.
Yes, I'd like to add, you know, my appreciation for all that work as well. All the work in the buildings, getting the food ready, being so creative about what the food is. And also, when the people are out there on the buses handing out the food, there have been many cold, rainy, very unpleasant days that they've been standing out there and smiling and, you know, really helping families so much. It's very much appreciated. We do appreciate all their work. Cassie?
I just want to add, you know, not all heroes wear capes, and those lunch ladies definitely are heroes. But I also want to just plug Joanne herself, because she's been the mastermind behind figuring out all the funding for this program, even when we didn't know if we were going to get money to pay for the food, you know, during the closure. So shout out to Joanne as well for her hard work behind the scenes.
Thank you. For sure.
And if I could add just one note to that, that just as a reminder for the public that food service used to be provided on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'm sorry, on Tuesdays and Fridays. It is now provided on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the reason for that is if we were to have a snow day or a cancellation on a Friday and the food became inaccessible, we don't want people to have to wait through the weekend. I mean, worst-case scenario, if we had a two-day storm, it shuts everything down. But in most cases, we'd be able to switch food service from Thursday to Friday rather than having to wait until the following week. Also, Joanne's idea.
Right, and the same could be said for if we have a snow day on a Tuesday. We can move that out to Wednesday.
Wednesday.
So, you know, the food's coming a day late, but at least it's still coming, so.
And in the food that went out today, in each of the bags, there was a sheet that not only had the menu and the pickup spots and the times, it also reminded people of the Tuesday, Thursday, because that is so new. Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Okay, school committee reports. The warrant subcommittee approval is for accounts payable warrant number 3117, dated 1/13/2021, in the amount of $112,112.36. And I'll introduce a motion to approve that.
Moved.
Haley, second?
Second.
Heather, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Timmy, yes.
Thank you. I think we have it unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, and I think we have it unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the business section of the meeting. First item is to review and discuss school reopening process. Brian, anything else on that?
No, I mean, I gave an overview during my superintendent's report and also thanked the, the parents who had asked for a little bit more information. And specifically what it is that they were looking for that would be helpful to the community, so in my next update, I will provide as much of that information as we possibly can. And if we're not able to get all of it out to, to families on Friday, I will let them know when that will be together. But just, this would be an opportunity if anybody, anybody on the committee had any questions about discussions that we had had. I just felt like I'd leave this open, but I don't have anything in particular to add beyond what I shared in the school committee report, or in the superintendent's report.
Anyone on the committee have any questions or anything for Brian? Okay, I think Haley.
I just thought it might be a good time to reiterate that, you know, if and when we do bring students back, it's still always going to be an option for families to choose. To stay remote if they want to for their individual family. So. That choice will still be out there.
Yep.
Thank you for that reminder. Definitely. Anyone else? Okay, next item is fiscal year 2022 preliminary budget presentation, and that is Joanne again.
Brian and I are going to tag team this. And so he's going to get us started.
So, this is the fancy cover page. And as you know, we continued the three-year strategy into a fourth year because. The strategic goals were not quite completed as we endured. A school closure with the start of the pandemic. As a result of that. From our district improvement plans, there are the same really five points of focus as there were from last year, so that these. District objectives can still be carried through with. Support faculty and the implementation, implementation of the district's fundamental instructional practices, obviously. Training and collaboration have evolved in a very different way this year, and it has given our. Our educators an opportunity to apply skills that they never knew that they might have to have. We have an extensive focus on social and emotional learning, which will become extremely important. As students hopefully return back to school soon, but even in. Even in remote times, I'll highlight this a little bit later, we're seeing significant increases in social emotional concerns among students in the community. We continue the process of teaching for diversity. And at each school, including at the high school where there was extensive training through teaching tolerance, there have been a number of places where. A variety of lessons and activities have been purposefully integrated for the purpose of engaging in dialogue. About diversity and equity, and those have extended down now to the elementary school for next year. My hope would be to expand. The practices for. Within each of the schools and the opportunities that students have to continue those, that, to expand that dialogue. Extensive curriculum development is going on at. Both the high school and elementary level. And those curriculum units are being aligned with. The state frameworks. In community engagement. You know, I'm pleased to have received a couple of recent. Communications and ideas about being more efficient and effective in our communications to the community. And am very appreciative. To both Stacy and Hymena for their work in reaching out to popular, non-English speaking populations to ensure that in this remote time, it's very difficult. For families who don't speak English as a first language to get access to resources and education, and I appreciate all of their effort. We'll continue to work with area districts as well as community stakeholders to explore opportunities for shared programs and services. And this Friday, I have a meeting with, to, to work on. A grant to continue to explore the process for partial or whole regionalization with the Pioneer School District. We will need to take the time very shortly to reestablish a district equity committee. With a diverse group of stakeholders for the purpose of helping us across the district. Continue to advance. Equity and diversity in learning and access, I think the most important part of this is for people to understand that, that gets lost in this is. One of the ways that we can become a more equitable district is to ensure that we are actively recruiting students. And providing them with access to rigorous and challenging coursework. And, and I'm sorry. Are the, when you guys look at my screen. Are your faces in the way of any of these numbers? Okay, that's just on my screen then, okay. So, Joanne will take over from here.
Okay, so I tried to look at the enrollment trends to see where. It looks like we may end up. In fiscal 22 for our revenue. So you know that revenue is typically based on foundation enrollment of the prior year. So that would be this year's October 1 numbers. And the foundation enrollment is made up of the students that live in our towns, that attend our schools. The students that live in our towns that go to charter school. And the students that live in our towns that go to choice. Out in a different district. That makes up foundation enrollment. So at the top, in the top chart. Under the black box, you can see our district enrollment. Now remember, our district enrollment includes all of our kids that live in our towns, the students that choice to our district. And it includes our tuitioned in students from Irving. So we have 849 students right now, and that is. Much lower than the 934 we had last year. And that number had been relatively consistent. It's been coming down a little bit, but. Not that significantly in, in many years, hasn't come down that dramatically since 2012. So. Some of the reasons are that kids are. You know, families of very young children are choosing not to send them to school, preschoolers, kindergarten. And even first grade, those numbers are down. And then. About half of our eighth graders. Left for tech school. Going into ninth grade, but that's not. That's not unusual. That number has been relatively big for a couple of years now. And as you look at this. It says K to nine enrollment, and that's really K to eight.
K nine enrollment is our. It's our dog program?
It's our dog program, yes. So. So the top section is our enrollment in the buildings. The next little chart is our charter school numbers, so you can see that charter school has come up a little bit in the last couple of years. It peaked back in 2015 when we had 70 students out to charter schools. So it did come down a little bit in between, but it seems to be going back up again. And then our choice in and out numbers. So those numbers are both down, so the choice in means we have less revenues coming in for our school choice students. From 83 down to 65 students, and our choice out means that we're going to pay out less money. For the 38 students that are not choicing out this year. And a lot of that could be families that have decided to homeschool. Or, you know, they've returned to the district, or they moved out of town. You know, there's a lot of reasons for that. But we're assuming that the difference in choice out. Is similar to the difference in the students that are in our buildings right now, and that's just that more people are deciding to homeschool their students. Can you go to the next page? So this is a picture of the enrollment trends. And at the bottom line is the high school enrollment, and it includes grade nine. And that. Has shown from 2011 where we had just about 300 students. Now we're below 200 students at the high school. But that decline has been gradual right through. And then if you go up and you look at the district enrollment, the gray line, you can see how that really dropped in fiscal 21. Where it had been sort of up and down and relatively stable, that number dropped significantly. In fiscal 21, and that is a product of the very young students, that those numbers are down this year. And then the K eight enrollment is the same thing.
So one of the things that, you know, I, I wanted to change a little bit from this year, and I'll, I'll get to this in a, my presentation later. But that, any potential increases that might occur in chapter 78? And we, my understanding is from meetings with the commissioner. Recently that the next Esser grant is supposedly going to be 3.7 times as large as the original Esser grant. We've not gotten those actual numbers. But. You know, that is, that is what the commissioner said to us on last Thursday. So one of the things that changes i- in our. Focus on any potential increases in revenues, even if it's emergency revenues. Is we're going to have to use some of that money, perhaps a significant amount of that money. To assess the loss and address. The loss in academic and social emotional growth and achievement as a result of the pandemic. And that will become a primary focus because. That really is how we're going to be able to show a social emotional return on investment as we now are stuck in a situation like every other school district in the state. Where we're going to have to make up ground and help our kids learn and grow much more quickly.
So the revenue breakdown, you can see just over half of our revenue comes from town assessments. And state aid is about a third of our budget. Those numbers haven't changed. If we go to the next slide. You can see that historically, that's right around where our numbers are. The assessment numbers have come up since 17, since fiscal 17, when it was just under 50% of our budget. And the grants have come down. Medicaid has come down. And that's where it made up for that. So these are our projected revenues, and these projected revenues are assuming. That the state uses the current year enrollment figures to do their foundation budget. Now there's talk out there that they may use prior year numbers to do. The foundation budget to make that calculation, and if that happens. That first number, chapter 70 state aid, I expect that increase to be closer to $500,000 instead of $80,000. But until the end of January, when we hear what. The. State is going to do, and we receive the governor's first take on the budget. We're not going to know, and so this is the number we're working with right now. This is a guaranteed amount. We know we'll get at least this 80,000. So part of the reason that. It's 80,000, we're assuming it's $30 per pupil extra. Except the fiscal 21 approved number of 7,49,000. Came in on the last cherry sheet as 7,100,000. So the most recent cherry sheet is higher than that, so. Our projected revenue in fiscal 22 is really just $30,000 higher than what we're getting right now. Except it's $80,000 higher than what we budgeted for fiscal 21. The Medicaid numbers remain unchanged. Interest income has been a little higher, so we did increase that. By $1,000. E and D, right now, we're proposing using the same amount for E and D as we have. The Irving tuition is based on. Estimated calculation of what we. You know, based on the student enrollment that we expect to have in the building next year. Irving. Tuition calculations can't be done until the year is complete, so when fiscal 21 ends. And the end of year report is done. In October, then the tuition calculation is done after that. And it's based on prior year enrollments, but. The expenses are also based on prior year expenses, so we need to wait for the year to be over to see where we're really going to land, but. This is an estimate of where I think we'll land. Charter reimbursement. Is also really just an estimate because. Charter reimbursement is. We get a reimbursement based on the new students. That are going to go to charter next year. We don't even know who those students are just yet. So when the state puts out the cherry sheet, they're using current year information to just give you the current year information on it. So I rounded that number to 150,000. Transportation reimbursement is reimbursement of our regular ed transportation. From the prior year, so whatever we spend for regular ed transportation in fiscal 21, we get reimbursed at a rate of maybe 70. To 80% in fiscal 22. So that number's also up in the air until we know what we've spent. The operating assessments are, right now, they're based on the Montague Affordable Assessment calculation. So with capital, it came in at about. A 0.89%. Without capital, it was about 1.15% operating assessment. The capital debt is just that, as the debt goes down. As we get to the out years, I believe fiscal 22 is our final year of the Sheffield Window Project. And we might have about five years left on the high school debt. And then the revolving accounts. That would include. Our food services, athletics. All of our grants, so we budget into here, title one, title two, our special ed allocation grant. A lot of our larger grants are built into the budget here, so that way you can see the staffing and everything that goes along with those. Some of the grants that are not allocation grants, we don't know how much money we're going to get, or even if we're going to get a grant, so we don't work those into the budget. Circuit breaker revolving is. A fund that. We receive reimbursement based on high-cost special needs students, so as I said. Earlier, we. Brought a couple of students, a couple of our out of district placements back into the district, so our costs are going down, and as our costs go down. Our revenue and circuit breaker goes down, so this isn't all bad news when you see that number going down. But it does mean that in fiscal 22, we're going to have less to work with, so that's about $100,000 reduction. That we're going to see in circuit breaker revolving. School choice revolving, our revenues have come down to closer to 500, $550,000. So we try to bring our revenues down to meet that. But because we're able to. Leave some funds in school choice revolving and fiscal 21, we're estimating 600,000 there for fiscal 22. So our revenues are only up. Less than 1%. So that's not a lot of money to work with. Now, as I said, if, if. The state uses the prior year enrollment figures, fiscal 20 enrollment numbers to do the foundation calculation, we should get more, but right now. We have less than $200,000 in extra revenues to work with. These are the assumptions that we just talked about. So you can go to the next slide. And this is how I did the chapter 70 calculation, so I did this. A year ago, when we were trying to figure out how much money we thought we might get in chapter 70. And I looked at the slide from last year, and I think I was off by $30,000, so that was good for an early read on that. So this year, with our enrollment down, I'm using the 974, 974 student number that you saw on that first slide. It would mean that we'd land back and hold harmless, and we would only get the minimum aid. So if that, if that number, that 974 is 1,074, like it was last year. Our chapter 70 aid would be more like 7.5 million instead of 6.5 million that the calculation would bring up.
And, you know, the, those, those determinations are made by the legislature. And I know that there has been a really significant lobbying effort on the part of the superintendent's association as well as the commissioner's office. For the legislature to recognize that every school district in, in the Commonwealth has declining enrollment because of the pandemic this year. And that would, for many school districts, would have a significant impact, so. We believe, according to the commissioner, although they've given us nothing. Concrete, we do believe that they're going to take that into consideration, and it's unlikely. That they're going to use our 974 foundation here in Gil Montague, that they're going to use either last year's number or perhaps something in between. At least we're hopeful of that. So a- as Joanne had indicated, the foundation budget, you know, is based on that enrollment number. And the, um, last year, was it, this year, the foundation budget was the first time I remember in going through the interview process and asking a question of those who were interviewing me saying, and, and, and said, you know, how, depends on how the district is doing financially. And I do remember Joanne saying, uh, her response was, the money's all set. Don't worry about it. And so that was sort of the response in the interview process. And I could see why, because clearly they had gotten the, um, the cherry sheet back. The Student Opportunities Act took effect and due to that formula, um, chapter seventy eight increased by about five hundred thousand dollars here. And that provides us the opportunity, it, hopefully that will continue into the upcoming year. To deal with the myriad of things that we're gonna have to do along with that additional money that we get from Esser and CARES Act, uh, to take care of the issues of remediation and pulling students along.
So this is, uh, Montague's Affordable Assessment calculation that I received from the town of Montague. And so once I get this, I just back into what that percentage is. So their operating assessment would be ten million, six sixty six, three fifty two. And I back into what it would be for Gil in order to determine what our estimated assessment would be as we build this budget. And here you can see what the two towns assessments would look like. You see the first line and operating assessment, they both go up by the one point one five percent. And that's based on, you know, not knowing what their percentages are going to be, because the minimum contributions, there's a lot of stuff that goes into calculating the town assessments, but we can't calculate them until the governor's puts out his first budget. The capital assessments are based on enrollment in the high school building. So between Gil and Montague, there how many students to eat, does each town send to that building? And so Montague has come down a little bit, but Gil has gone up. And so the percentages changed quite significantly. For Gil, it looks like it's, it's gone up quite a bit. More than it's been in the past several years. So the thirty six point two percent increase for the Gil's Town Assessment, you know, is, is probably not exactly what they were expecting. So the total operating assessment would be about a hundred and forty one thousand dollars right now. So here we can see the revolving council. This is circuit breaker. And you can see in fiscal twenty one that the revenue estimate is a little lower than it's been. That number, I believe, we just got another update on it. And so the two thirty five for fiscal twenty one, I think that's gone up a little bit. So I'm gonna have to check that slide to make sure. The ending balance in the circuit breaker revolving account can never be more than the revenue that we received that year. So in fiscal twenty, we received two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. So the ending balance was two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. So we try to keep it right around there. School choice revolving. I reduced the amount of money that we are spending in fiscal twenty one in order to bring more of a surplus into the ending balance to have it available for fiscal twenty two. So I think we had initially budgeted closer to six hundred thousand dollars spending in fiscal twenty one. And so that's what I'm budgeting there in fiscal twenty two. And we can, that's one of the numbers when we start talking about the budget that we can move. You know, we could spend more in fiscal twenty two from school choice revolving. We could spend more from E and D. There's a few options that we have in looking at how do we balance this budget. And this is our E and D. I have not heard back from the D O R about the certification just yet, but I expect it's gonna be right around the six hundred and fifteen thousand. So we'll wait and see. Hopefully I'll have it by the next meeting. So I'm comfortable using the hundred and fifty. And this is how our expenditures break out. So instruction is about half of the budget. Benefits are, you know, a pretty good portion. They're the next largest section of our budget. And then tuition is the third largest. Student services are, is things like transportation, athletics, food services, nurses. And when we look at this chart, you see that those numbers haven't changed too significantly. So about fifty percent has been wages right along. About twenty percent has been benefits. And choice and charter tuitions have been about eleven percent. So not a lot of changes there. Now, this is clear gov. This is a tool that's out there that we can compare ourselves to other peer groups. So the schools that we choose to compare ourselves to are schools that are like us. In so we have Winchton, Gateway, Greenfield, Palmer, Ware, Adams, Cheshire, Athol, Royalston, and Mohawk Trail. And when we look at our spending comparison to these peers, we're on the upper end. And if you remove Mohawk from that, we're we're very close to the top. Mohawk seems to be an outlier on this one. So that range, you can see it from fourteen thousand up to nineteen thousand. This piece is the, it's one thing that really stands out. In this, this case, we're the highest with our peers. So our insurance for our retired school employees is eighty seven percent higher than similar districts. So eleven hundred dollars per pupil, over eleven hundred dollars per pupil is spent on retiree insurance. That's a huge number. Mohawk is right behind us, but then you see how low some of those districts get. So here you can see our projected expenditures. Just get into my notes page here. So there, there's some allocation changes that always go into this. There's some staffing changes. Sometimes the state will say, you know, we really want, um, you to report technology in a different way. And so there's category code changes. So all of that is taken into account, um, when we build this budget. You can see that instructional is going up about five percent. We have some new positions that have gone into that. And then the salary increases, increases are part of that. So it was a few different things that go into the, the increases. But nothing really significant outside of the new positions that we're adding. Student services is
Sorry.
It's, um, transportation, as I said, nurses and food service and athletics. And so that one's going up quite a bit. And we have a thirty percent increase in our nurse line. Transportation's going up about uh, oh, I'm sorry, not thirty percent, thirty thousand. Transportation's going up about thirty thousand and food services going up about thirty thousand. And athletics as well is going up about thirty thousand. So all of those numbers put together on a smaller budget add up to a pretty significant increase. Four thousand, oh, no, go back. Four thousand is operations. And operations includes utilities, it includes technology, software. We've had extra software this year. Our utilities are going up about twenty thousand. We have a couple of new staff positions requested in there and that's about fifty thousand. So that's what's leading to that. And the last one I want to talk about is the tuitions. That is coming down because of our out of district placements. So Diane Ellis has really worked hard to bring students back into the district if we could meet their needs. And so I believe there's three, maybe four students that had previously been out of district students that are either in lower cost placements or back in the district. So that's, that's the reason for that number. It has nothing to do with choice and charter. Choice and charter actually making that number a little the, the, it's making the savings. It's taking up some of the savings because choice and charter is still going up. So now we can go to the next slide. So see, these are some of the large expenditure increases. And so insurance and fixed charges, I put them all together because some might be going up, some might be going down, but altogether, they create a large change. So health insurance, we have to make an assumption. And so the, the state rates won't come out for health insurance until April, after you've approved the budget. So we're assuming an increase of four percent plus we assume additional retirees and additional staff when we build this. So that's a two hundred and twenty four thousand dollar increase. Our town retirement assessment is decreasing a little bit this year. And that's really a result of our enrollment on October first being a little lower than it's been in the past. So we see a reduction there, but in the future, oh, there's a little typo there. We'll need to fix. In the future, we should assume that that number's gonna go back up where it was because we'll have our staffing all in place on October one. The next line is our negotiable increases. And so we brought that down by about three hundred thousand dollars. Now you can go back to the prior slide. We brought that down by about three hundred thousand dollars because our unit A and unit C contracts are settled. And so we don't need to budget anything in negotiable increases for them in fiscal twenty two. But the cafeteria and custodial contracts have expired. So we're budgeting for them here and we're budgeting for any non-union contracts in this line. And then our potential retirements are a little lower than they had been in the prior year. And so that's, we have twenty five thousand dollars there, but that's a reduction from last year. Instructional and operations, we had six point eight three additional F T E positions in this budget for two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. Um, some of the positions are things that we had talked about a year ago that we wanted to add, like adjustment counselors and first grade pairs. And other items, the speech language pathologist is actually, it would be a new hire, but it would be replacing a contracted services that we're currently paying. So the added cost is about thirty thousand dollars, but it gets us more hours of a speech language pathologist in our buildings. And the custodians would really, they, they'd be taking the place of the sanitizer positions that we are going to need to hire to bring kids back to school this year. So we're building that into the budget for next year. And then the tuitions, as I said, we moved a couple of high cost students either back into the district or into lower cost placements. But then in spite of our school choice out being down in fiscal twenty one, we have to assume that it's going to go back up in the budgeting process. Otherwise we could be in trouble next year. Now you can go to the next slide. These are the new position requests. So we have, uh, custodial supervisor would be in place of a district wide custodian that we have. We have one and a half custodians that would, they, there'd be two, two people and they would split time. School adjustment counselor would be at Gil in Hillcrest. Speech language pathologist would be a district wide position. And the first grade pairs would be for the four first grade classrooms at Hillcrest and Gil. So our preliminary budget, we talked about the revenue being about, let, just less than two hundred thousand dollars. However, our expenses are about six hundred thousand dollar increase. So we have right now a four hundred thousand dollars sur, uh, deficit. So that's the deficit we're gonna be working on over the next couple of months. Hopefully it comes to us in chapter seventy. If it doesn't come to us in chapter seventy, you know, we have some things to look at. We have the new positions that we're adding, which are two hundred and thirty one thousand. We have you know, the Esser grant. Potentially we have more school choice or E and D. So there's, there's a few options out there, but we'll continue to keep an eye on these things and continue to look at the budget and see if we can make any adjustments to this to bring that deficit number down some. And so our next steps for the budget are a week from now, we're gonna review the line item budget. So we'll send that out to you soon. And then on the twenty sixth, you'll be voting your preliminary budget. But on the twenty seventh, the governor's first release of the budget is going to be coming out. So then we'll know what the chapter seventy is. So we're gonna have to have, we're gonna have to do some work to have you vote a balanced budget on the twenty sixth. And then on February ninth, we'll have this, the budget hearing. In February or March, we'll, I anticipate we'll be meeting with the town's finance committees again. And then on March ninth is when you vote the final budget.
Thank you, Joanne.
Welcome. Does anyone have any questions, concerns? Recommendations?
Cassie?
Sorry, I was having trouble unloading there. Um, I know a lot of time and effort goes into building the budget and I always feel like as soon as budget season ends, it begins again. Like we never really finished talking about the budget. Uh, but I just want to say, you know, two or three years ago, we, we bought a new math program. Last year there were talks prior to COVID, I guess this was almost two years ago, um, about an E L A curriculum. Um, my understanding was there was a surplus prior to COVID happening and, and it was purchased. Um, I just want to put it out there that I feel like upon return to school, when and if we ever do go back to normal, it's going to be incredibly important that we have those support positions and the staff in place because instruction is gonna look so much different going back. And so I just want to kind of put it out there that, um, you know, I know curriculums are always evolving and changing and we always want to stay on top of the framework and whatnot, but, um, I'm so glad to see the first grade pairs written back into the, into the budget. Again, I know that we have to figure out how to balance it. You know, but there's gonna be a lot of social and emotional learning that needs to happen when the kids are back in the building. So I just want to put that out there.
Jennifer?
I'm just turning my camera off, so hopefully I, you can hear me. Every year we, we do get some feedback, but it seems that, um, the dates, not everyone's always aware of the dates. So, um, if you could just maybe email those dates out to the the community or the staff, just to let people know, um, when is the best time to provide feedback is really sooner than later, so that we can consider it.
Right. And the public hearing is set for February ninth, and that is the ideal time for people to come and provide feedback on the budget, February ninth, Tuesday night.
And there will be an ad placed in the local newspaper about that as well as notification, any other way that we're able to do it. We probably will need to also include a snow date because it has happened in February and actually in March, when we voted officially, the final budget vote for the committee. Both of those dates have been impacted other years by bad weather. So we should be thinking that people will, you know, also be given a snow date. That, um, we would have to, because it has to be voted by a particular date. So we're going to need to keep a good eye on that.
Me, I need the snow date this year with remote. Unless we lose power.
Right. And that, that's the issue. Right. The power thing is, is another issue. Um, technology being what it is.
Yes.
Excuse me, Jane?
Yep, to me.
Yeah, I'm talking about having people aware. I just having people aware. I just wanted to call to the committee's attention is that the past few years, I don't know, three or so, four, we've had the civic leaders meetings and they have been apprised of the budget and where it stands and the amounts and figures as the development process has been going on and they have been able to give us feedback and of course, because of the COVID, we haven't had civic leaders meetings and I just think some thought maybe needs to go into get passing information on to the select boards and finance committees starting sooner than later in the budget process and the figures we're talking and things like that. This may have been done and somehow I missed it, but I'm not aware of it. They're getting information yet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Timmy. I do know the, the only meeting that we've had so far was the meeting to discuss, you know, I, I got a good tutorial from, I think a combination of Montague Finance with, I don't know, I don't remember, Joanne, if there were representatives there from Gil, but I got a good tutorial in the Montague Affordable Assessment Process. So that, that, that's the only meeting that we've had so far, but I do know that, you know, like police and fire were not included in that meeting. So I will need to take the opportunity to reengage other departments.
Well, not, not only that, but I think that the towns need to know what figures we are working on. We've been able to share these with them during the budget development process because we had civic leaders meetings, but we haven't been able to have them this year. And the town's budget is going to be, you know, they're going to be starting their process and they need to have guidelines at least.
Yep. Yep. So, Timmy, we are working with the Town of Montague's Affordable Assessment and I believe that that was shared with the Town of Gil also at that meeting that we attended. The affordable was out early on. So that's the number that we have in here right now and we're not, we haven't changed it. So you always try to stick with the Affordable Assessment number as long and in the budget process.
But, Timmy, I will do that outreach to engage them anyways because obviously we want to, I think that, that's a great organization that that dialogue, the frequency of that dialogue and collaboration is certainly something that contributed greatly. When things got into crisis, that allowed the towns to have the confidence to step up.
That's right. That when we were in crisis back, I don't know, four or five years ago, maybe now. That's when that, maybe three, that's when that started. And so they were involved in the process. Oh, at least once a month, if not every three weeks. And so they knew where we were going, they could give us feedback, they could say, oh, this looks bad or there's shift in tech school and that's doing this or that to one of the other towns and budgets and it's just a, it's good to involve them along the way. It'll make it a much easier ride.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Bill?
I just always want to stand up for the fact that in, in my belief, the school district, the superintendent, the business manager should be the ones working on establishing the budget. The outside influences are always helpful. But until the educators develop what they think is best, I don't think that we need the selectmen of either town or the finance committees. They've given us information that we can use to help in developing the budget. But our first charge is to try to develop an educational program that advances everyone's interest. And that's not to say, Timmy is not, Timmy's effort to keep everyone informed is an excellent idea. But at some point, you have to operate outside that to develop what you're going to bring forward to inform people of what your idea is. Thanks a lot.
Anything else? Okay, thank you both, Joanne and Brian, for that information.
Welcome.
Next.
Jane froze.
I'm just pulling up my agenda.
You're back, Jane.
Okay, thanks.
Cassie was right there, though.
I know. Thank you, Cassie. Every once in a while, my connection isn't great. Apparently where I live does not help all of this, but we're working. Thank you all. Brian, would that be you or Joanne to?
Yeah, so at the most recent executive session, we had consensus from the committee to increase the upper end of the proposed salary range for the district tech and tech director and data manager position from $95,000 to $105,000, which would give me the opportunity to then enter into negotiate, renegotiating the contract for that individual.
Yes, and just for public information, the school committee is not involved in negotiations for administrators, but we are involved in any changes in the job description. And that is something that's included in the job descriptions. That's something we need to vote for. So I will entertain a motion to make that change.
So moved, Haley?
Okay, thank you.
Cassie seconded.
Cassie, any discussion, questions or comments about that?
Excuse me, Jane, who made the motion?
Haley made the motion and Cassie seconded.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the list is a discussion of the Commonwealth Virtual School Enrollment. In your packet, there's a lengthy section of documents that explains what this is exactly. Any input on that, Brian?
Yeah, sure. So basically what the, what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts does in Department of Education provides us details from enrollment from the October 1st SIMs process or the reporting of the October 1st enrollments across districts. And there, as part of the regulations, that they provide school districts the opportunity to cap enrollment for the virtual school and Gil Montague for any school that has an enrollment above 1% and we are at 1.06%. So just wanted to enter into a discussion about whether or not, you know, there's no vote on this, but if anybody needed any information, my, my general thinking was, you know, while we are in the pandemic, we've seen a slight increase in enrollment in the virtual school and while some of those students may decide to stay, we may seem to see some students come back. However, given the fact that, you know, remote learning has been a challenge for everybody and it's not that much higher than 1%, I don't really know as though there's a reason for us to consider capping it right now because I think we'll probably be back below 1% in future years.
Haley?
Brian, is this a historical first that we would be above 1% at all?
I don't have any historical research to rely on, however, it's the first experience that I've had, you know, in seeing this document to begin with. So I do know that they really only send it out to schools that are close to the 1%.
And I would have to add to that. I, I agree. I have not seen it and I've been on committee. This is my 11th year. But I think this is an unusual year in many ways. And I would expect many of the districts that are either close to, at or above that 1%.
You froze, Jane.
Jane, we can't hear you.
What happened to her sound?
People would like to vote on it. I think.
Jane, we missed, we missed all of that. I'm sorry. We couldn't hear most of what you did.
If you could repeat that, Jane.
Okay, it didn't tell me that I wasn't, I was unstable this time. It just let me be surprised. I felt the same as Brian did when I read it. This is a really unusual year. And I think families need the flexibility to do what's best for their students and themselves in these difficult times. I think we need to support whatever they need. And I think thinking about capping it at this point would not be really a helpful thing to do, but I, we certainly can consider it if that's what people are thinking.
And we do have until March 8th to inform them. So if we can raise the issue again, if for some reason there are changes in enrollment.
Joanne?
So I, I have not heard that we've been over a cap in the past either. But I think there's two things that are going into bringing us over that cap. It's that our enrollment is down to 852, which is lower than it's been. And that number's gone up to just over nine. Now, if that number gets up to like 12 or 13, that could become a problem because once kids are in, you can't then go back and say, now we're going to cap it.
Right.
And because you're not going to bring them back. But if our enrollment goes up and the enrollment in the virtual school stays flat, then we're going to come out of that over the cap.
Right. And since this is really in a sense, a first reading of these documents and our first experience with them, there would be no issue about adding this to a later agenda so that people can read the information, do any other research they want to. And then we could come back to a discussion and vote if necessary. Haley?
Does this opportunity to cap come up every year?
I think, yeah, I, I believe it does. Like I said, though, I, I don't have a history, but Jane had indicated because they do, they do send this to the superintendent and the chair of the school committee. And she's not received one in the past. So it appears as though they only provide the option to districts who have reached or exceeded the 1% cap.
Yes, and the, and the literature indicated that if next year was the same issue, we would also be given that opportunity. I think that, that's the way I read it, but I again, will go through it at least one more time. I've looked at it a couple of times and make sure we're not missing anything. It also, just in the short version, if we, if any school district decides to cap the number, it does not mean that any students currently there would not be able to continue. Any students that are currently in the virtual schools are always allowed to continue. A cap would only apply to additional students. Joanne?
If you look at the chart that's there, you'll see that like Athol, Athol Royalston, they chose to cap theirs in the past. But then a school like Spencer, East Brookfield also chose and they're not above the 1% now. So if they get back to 1%, that's when it would get capped again.
Right.
So there's a lot of them down in the lower area that had voted to cap it and it looks like maybe a lot of these lower numbers, it's the first time that they've reached their, reached the 1%.
Right. I think it's, all things considered, it's an unusual year in general for district. But it's information like anything else. Okay, if there's nothing else at the moment about it, we certainly can put it on a future agenda since we have to do it by March if we decide to. I think we should put it before too long. Okay. Alrighty, next we have a discussion of the impact of remote hybrid learning and initial remediation plans. Brian, that would be you.
All right, it's just going to take me one second to share my screen.
Right side, clear.
Where?
Upper right-hand corner.
Upper right-hand corner?
No, I mean, where it says percent.
I'm sorry, Tina.
Right beside the share button, yeah. There. You got it.
So I believe it, one of the, one of the school committee members, it may have been Mike, wanted, wanted to begin to hear about the impacts that we're dealing with in, in the remote model. And so the, the principals have been monitoring student engagement in a number of other factors and data. And I wanted to give a brief presentation on some of the data that we've aggregated so that the committee has an idea, one, of what it is that we're looking at in terms of remediation. First, or the impact of remote learning. Two, wanted to share some of the ideas that we have for beginning the process of programming for improving growth while we're losing ground. And then to make a proposal at the end, which is actually the next item on the agenda for the school committee to consider as a motion. So in the, looking at the impact of remote learning, the first thing we, I asked the principals to do is to create, create what they see as a definition of a struggling learner in their school. And we're beginning the process of assessing this and at the end, I'm just going to give a little bit of a brainstorm that we had put together as an administrative team on the variety of things that we could begin to do with some of that Esser and Karazak money once we get our students on campus. So to give you a picture, here at the high school and middle school, they used course failures as an indicator of students who are struggling. So at Turner's Falls High School, in ninth grade, there were 10 failures last year, this fall, 16. In the 10th grade, it jumped from seven to 32 course failures. In the ninth grade, from nine to 16. And in the senior class, there were two course failures in the first quarter of fall of 2019 and now there are 29. In the middle school, in the sixth grade, there were 23 course failures. That's now jumped to 43. In the seventh grade, from 33 to 79, and in the eighth grade, from 15 course failures up to 82 course failures. So you can see in the high school and the middle school that there is a significant impact on student learning as a result of being in remote. At Hillcrest, the attendance number that's there is the attendance for the entire school. Granted, enrollment is down slightly, not, not too much at Hillcrest, only one student fewer at Hillcrest. But attendance is down by three percentage points. And basically for the definition, at each grade level, what the principals did was they selected the, really the core standard on the report card. So I just put reading standard across the board rather than giving the individual standard by grade. And in the fall of 2019, there were 42% of students not meeting the standard. And basically that falls into the category of not meeting the standard or approaching the standard. So anybody who's not meeting it, anybody who falls below meeting the standard went from 42% last fall up to 74% this fall. By contrast, those students not meeting the math standard actually declined in the first grade at Hillcrest. And in kindergarten, the number of students not meeting the reading standard was 91% and is up to 98%. Not meeting the math standard went from 87% to 92%. Not meeting the math standard, it went from 87% to 92% in the fall of 2020. In, at Sheffield, attendance is down by a little bit more than a percentage point, about a point and a half. Those students not meeting the standard in grade two in reading went from 74% up to 81%. Not meeting the math standard went from 64% up to 87%. Not meeting the reading standard went from 74% up to 96%. Not meeting the math standard in grade three from 91% to 100% of learners in the fall. In grade four, there's actually a little bit of a decline that those not meeting the reading standard actually went down by 2%. And those not meeting the math standard went down by 10%. And so this may be a place where there is some effective, some effective remote learning. What's going on? Some effecting, and so there's an opportunity for us to grasp on to something that we might be able to capitalize on in the future. In grade five, not meeting the standard for reading went from 70% to 85%. Not meeting the standard in math went from 74% up to 82%. At Gill, attendance is actually improved by a little bit more than a percentage point, up to 96%. Not meeting the reading standard in kindergarten went from 58% to 91%. However, not meeting the math standard actually declined significantly, going from 73% in the fall of 2019, down to 25%. Grade one, oh, sorry, those not meeting the standard went from 56% up to 92% in reading. And math stayed the same at 50%. Grade two, not meeting the reading standard, actually in both of these cases, dropped from 55% of students in grade two at Gill last fall, down to 36% and 14% respectively for reading and mathematics. At grade three, not meeting the standard, 37% went up to 71% this fall. 58% in math, up to 94% of students not meeting the standard. Those not meeting the standard in reading went from 50% actually down to 42%. The numbers, this particular standard that they chose was not, not taught last year at this grade level. So that is not a point of comparison. But only 27, 21% of the students this fall are not meeting the math standard. In grade five, those not meeting the reading standard, there is no point of comparison for last year on that particular standard. But 19% of those students are not meeting the standard. Last year, in the fall, all students were meeting the standard in grade five in mathematics. That's up to 10% of students not meeting the standard in grade five. And in grade six, those not meeting the reading standard went up by 3%. And the, the number not meeting the math standard, the only number that we have available is for the fall of 2020. 73% of the students are not meeting the standard in mathematics in grade six. So Diane, if you wanted to jump in here to talk about our most vulnerable learners briefly?
Sure. Hello everyone, Diana Ellis. I can't see myself in the screen, but I can see Brian's slide. So Brian did a nice job kind of over, you know, giving you an overview of what some of those performance measures are. Excuse me, what some of those performance measures are. I just want to add, so parents of students with disabilities, so SWD for brevity, brevity on the slide, overwhelmingly report remote learning challenges. This has been communicated consistently in team meetings. The first thing we talk about when we convene an IEP or educational program team meeting is what are parents' concerns? And parents have really expressed a lot of challenges with remote learning. Difficulty supporting their child. In addition to that, there are significant portions, a significant portion of our students with disabilities who cannot effectively access remote learning. Some of that is on the basis of a disability in terms of engaging in electronic format on a screen. But for other students, it's just not a modality that works well. So they can look at the screen, but the processing of it, the attention. So we, we are getting that feedback from our families and that data shows up. We have seen, and this just jumps off the screen to me, there has been a 25% increase in requests for special education evaluations this year. And we are in January. There's been a substantial increase in requests for social emotional support, given anxiety, attention, depression. We are seeing increased requests for 504 accommodation plans. We are getting feedback from our English learner students and their families. Families overwhelmingly want their L students to be in school. And if any of the, if any of folks in our listening audience or our school committee members, I tried to learn Spanish. I also tried to learn French. In order to really learn a second language, you really have to have immersion in that language. It's very hard to provide the same opportunity for English language development in remote learning. In addition, our counselors have reported that they have seen increased requests for both situational support to come join into a Google classroom, to be a presence, to be a resource, as well as a high demand for outside counseling services. And so they're spending more time providing indirect support, helping families try to connect to linkages in the community. There's some long wait, wait lists for outside services. And so our counselors have been pretty involved in both trying to make those referrals, but also in collaborating with outside counselors and doing kind of care coordination planning meetings. And lastly, I ran out of bullet space on this screen, but we've also seen, you know, the effect of extended remote learning on our homeless student population, as well as our foster care population who are recognized as priorities by state definition. We've seen foster care students who've had disruptive placements. So they were stable in a placement in a home in our community and have reached sort of some crisis and have been placed out of the foster home into stabilization group home programs, acute stabilization treatment programs. And so our vulnerable learners are definitely experiencing some of the stress that that's happening in our district. Brian, anything else you want me to add to this in terms of other points or?
No, I think that's fine. We, I just wanted to give a general overview and I knew that you had a good amount of anecdotal information that you shared often in executive session. So I just wanted to be able to get that out to the public and thank you very much Diane.
Sure. Thank you.
So in terms of beginning the process of addressing the learning loss, as I mentioned, we do have some resources. Many of the things that we, we look at are, are somewhat traditional. I've had a great deal of experience doing a number of these things in other school districts that have been very successful. Summer school tutoring, the idea of vacations or February or April vacation school. Credit recovery, we may have the opportunity, likely will have the opportunity to consider providing transportation for students to get to extended programming. The idea of doing redos or extend, get, providing extended time to complete work, granting incompletes at the high school or middle school level should be considered. Creating alternative packets to achieve course completion at the secondary level. One of the high school led by math teacher, I think the math department chair Amanda Helgerson is reaching out to high school students, a number of whom have done so in the past, but reaching out to high school students, the older students who are very willing to begin the process of tutoring younger students, in particular in mathematics. Within, we need to look at a structured intervention system that have blocks integrated into schedules, whether that happens this year or next year. That's something that we need to look at because I'm assuming that the, the loss of learning in content and skills is going to carry into next year, regardless of what we do because of the amount of time that's been lost. And addressing issues of attendance. You know, we, we need to do things like begin, beginning to do home visits at the elementary schools to make sure that those students stay engaged. So those were just, you know, that's a brief list, but I just kind of wanted to give you an overview of some of the things that we're exploring. And we'll be putting together in the future to pair up with the resources that we have available to us through the pandemic relief funding. And then my last slide is a proposal for Wednesdays. That is actually, you know, what, what I would present to the committee related to the next agenda item where I'm asking the committee to provide me the opportunity to allow the secondary school to also have early release days every Wednesday. Those days while we're in hybrid will be remote anyways. When the new time on learning expectations came out, we far exceed the expectation of 35 hours a week of synchronous instruction or live instruction over the course of a 10 day period of time, even with the idea of using Wednesdays. Part of this request did come from a meeting that I had with students at the high school level who felt like getting sometime, some additional time off screens would provide them the opportunity to catch up. And my, my proposal, I would express to principals that they should express to teachers that that would not be asynchronous learning time. In other words, we would provide no additional assignments for that time. But that that time could be used by high school and middle school students to catch up. Or to engage in support activities with teachers who would be offering it during that time. So as far as that time and how that time would be used by staff, that principals could organize grade level team meeting time to create support plans for student, individualized support plans for students. They could provide support time either to individuals or small groups. And there will be some additional planning time built into that time for teachers for their existing courses, but also assuming that there would need to be some preparation time to provide support materials or programming. So that's basically the reason, the rationale for my proposal for the next agenda item to sort of wrap this up. In order, the, the my, in my experience as a high school educator, high schools are notoriously bad at providing interventions like they do, like many schools are often really skilled based on data at the elementary level of providing a menu of interventions. And so at, in my previous school, we created grade level teams with, with a sense of purpose to move students along and, and get them to learn and grow at a faster rate. And I wanted to be able to provide that time within the schedule for these teams to be able to get together on a consistent basis during contracted time to keep those conversations focused on what we can do to help individual students at those grade levels. And provide menus of options for, for the faculty to consider putting in place. And so that's basically it. That's the summary and my request for the next agenda item Jane.
Okay. Oh, here we come. Everybody's coming back picture wise.
Oh, you fell, you fell off?
When you came back, I don't have most of them on screen. Do you have to do something for that?
We can hear you.
Right, but I don't have the pictures back. Do, do other people have the pictures back? Oh, there you go. Everybody's coming back. I don't know. Technology just confounds me more often than not. I, I just, personally, I need to say that that information was extremely important for us to have. I think to know how things are looking is huge, is really a huge amount of information that we need to work from. Cassie?
I have, sorry, I'm emotional because this is awful to see. Like this is horrible. We have 100% of third graders not meeting standards and you can't tell me that no working, learning is working. Because I didn't even show my elementary school student his report card because for the first time ever, it was awful. And it was so out of line with remote learning. This is not working. Like we are doing our students a disservice. And I want to know how admin is supporting the teachers who are trying to teach the same amount of curriculum in the same timeframe that they do in the building. Because not only are we not teaching our students, we're killing their spirit by forcing them to log on to a computer all day long and then telling them that they're doing a horrible job. Like I have no words and I'm probably not going to make you a lot of friends saying this, but as a parent and somebody that really cares and really tries hard and has a child with a disability that is trying hard, like this is a bunch of BS. Like I, like what are we doing? Just suck the schools down right now. Cause we're not providing them any sort of education. I mean, there was one grade that didn't, that didn't go down immensely in terms of meeting standards. So what, I mean, are we going to wait till the summer and then start having, like doing some intervention? Like, are we just going to let them keep dropping? Like, I, I'm sorry, I'm so upset, but that was disgusting. I had to turn off my camera. And I know people are trying, but if it's not working, you can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. It, it's just not going to work.
Jennifer?
I also think that, you know, the teachers are working hard, the students are working hard and maybe the expectations of where they need to be at, it's a pandemic. It's remote learning. It is not ideal. Maybe we need to adj, adjust what we expect. And that's not something we can necessarily control. We can't control the standards. But this is reality and it's not, our school is not unique, I'm sure.
If, if I could add one piece in, that is part of this consideration is that we'll get final word after the 26th, but the letter that I emailed out to the school committee that came from the commissioner, the commissioner, you know, in, in terms of the standards, enlightening the standard, and I've used this phrase with the administrative team, but wanted to share this with the school committee first. One of the things that's really clear is that every school district in the state, some more than others are going to need to do, be doing work with their students from now into next year and perhaps for a couple of years to come, depending on how long it takes for students to get back up to grade level. One of the things that we know is we have better tools to identify where students are at than we have had in the past. And so one of the things that's really important is that, and this is an opportunity, is that the commissioner has indicated that they're making modifications to the competency determination and MCAS testing. And they're planning to use MCAS testing, not as an accountability tool for schools, for admin, for teachers. They're looking this year at using it as a diagnostic tool. So what that does is it does provide us the opportunity, you know, where in the spring, the remote expectations were substantially depressed by the commissioner. Because they had, they knew we didn't have the resources. They knew that we didn't know what to do. This is the first indication that we've got, that they're willing to flex those expectations. And what I want to be able to do is make sure that I can provide guidance to my, my admin team and to my teachers. As soon as that vote comes through on the 26th, that we can say, we're going to begin a process of de-emphasizing the content and we're going to start teaching to children. And make sure that we have, because the most important thing that we have as educators, the primary factor that contributes to the success of any student, and Cassie hit the nail on the head in a, in a really emotional response, but this is what I, what I firmly believe was echoed in her sentiment is that the relationship that an educator has with a student, the academic relationship they have is the most important factor that contributes to the growth and learning of a child. And so what that vote will provide us the opportunity to do is to move off of an emphasis of that standard. So we won't be as low as we were in the spring. But we don't have to be as high as we are now. We can get somewhere in between and make sure that we grasp our kids. And when we have the kids engaged, that's when we can get them to develop, to be more invested in developing their own content and skills. And I agree, that's going to take them being on campus as much as we possibly can from here on out.
Bill?
I'm curious. Brian, when you say that on Wednesday afternoons, you're not going to have remote so that the kids are going to catch up. Now, if everybody's fallen so far behind, how are they, how do you propose that they're catching up without some kind of formal intervention? And then secondly, secondly, I'm just thinking of progressive comparisons. Whereas you were looking at third grade last year versus third grade this year. As opposed to third grade last year to fourth grade. third grade last year to fourth grade. So you're looking at the progression of the same children. I understand that that may not be the absolute measure that you're trying to track. You're really just looking at comparisons of how many people are not making it at a certain grade level. But you could also follow the kids. We've talked about that in reference to other aspects of learning. I mean, you know, I agree with Cassie, and I'm somewhat shocked because, not totally shocked, I'm a little bit surprised because from someone who's a former assistant soup and a current coach from time to time in his retirement has observed remote learning from a different part of our state. And he was actually pretty satisfied with what he was seeing, his granddaughter who was living with him in his household doing remote a hundred miles away. But you know, this is such a conflict of having a different educator relating to me how well it could be going, and then to see the numbers coming forward to realize that it is a bunch of junk. Just the numbers. I'm not talking about the effort at all, but it is concerning and it's almost backs up my thought from the beginning of all of this that what we're kind of heading into is putting off people's, I mean, we're gonna have to run so that this current group is gonna graduate when they're all twenty instead of eighteen. So basically, you just eliminate two years and start over again, and yet dealing in third grade with a bunch of fifth-grade-age kids. I doubt that's ever gonna happen, but it's, you know, it's bad enough that it's very concerning how we are gonna connect with these kids. And then the attendance numbers are also not very encouraging. That's about as positive as I can get, having looked at that stuff.
Yep, Bill, if I could give a response, very quick response to both of your questions. First of all, using the term catch-up was to imply first and foremost that we will not be giving them additional assignments for asynchronous learning. So in other words, the idea was not to pile work on. If they use that time to rest and stay off screens, that's up to the individual student. However, when we go down to the idea of individual interventions, certainly just giving time to catch up is not an individual intervention, but that's the idea of having the teams of teachers pulled together to identify interventions that would work for each individual student, and then to identify time and assign or cajole students into getting into that time, whether it's in person, something that's remote, something that's offered in the evening, whatever the case might be. You're right, we don't wanna, if we don't do anything, we will be two years in regression with kids, year and a half, two years. Our intent is to do something, and we can only do something if we present a realistic picture. And so my intent was to present a realistic picture with a rationale for how I would like to use the Wednesdays to begin that process. So thank you.
Could I have a follow-up?
Sure.
I just want getting the sure out of you has knocked the thought out of my mind.
I just, I'm trying not to talk too much myself, so please do.
I know what I wanted to say is I just hope that in the process of all of this, talking about expectations and standardized testing, the MCAS, one of the things I would prefer not to see it certainly in the long term is basically when you're talking about leveling things out, it's bringing the top down so that the bottom looks better. I hope that that's not where it's going to, your discussion, thinking about this is a year to develop some statistical approach, get information through the testing process. I still don't want to be deluded by adjusting the, what is an acceptable figure and what isn't, making it lower. That doesn't improve our learning situation. And now I'll be quiet.
Haley and then Cassie.
Thanks. Yeah, these numbers are really stark, and I think Cassie's reactions warranted. They're telling us clearly that remote isn't working. You know, it may be working well for some, but that's not good enough. As a parent with three kids who were in the district until recently, I've had to actually pull them out and homeschool them. I have to say that at certain times, I felt gaslit when I come to people in the district and say, this isn't working for us, we need to do something different. And, you know, I've heard about how well it's working for others. And that's unacceptable, and we have the numbers now to show us that it's unacceptable. So, Brian, I just wanted to say I absolutely support having a half-day on Wednesdays for secondary to do, you know, your plan. Thank you.
Cassie?
I've composed myself. So I just quickly wanted to add that. I'm assuming the data, at least at the elementary school, is coming from iReady assessment. And I think, you know, and not to say the data isn't correct, but we're also pushing assessments in uncontrolled environments. And the fact that we're doing that, you know, I mean, one kid could be at home with a parent that's next to them, making sure they're navigating it okay, and another one could be at home sharing a room with four siblings and having, you know, a challenge with, you know, a language barrier, or parents that can't help them navigate it. And we're putting that data next to each other, saying it's equitable.
Well, the data was, I actually avoided pulling the data specifically from iReady, Cassie, and I I asked them to use report cards because the principals made that same, they had that same consideration. Yeah, and so while we need to get baseline numbers at various points in time, we know that those numbers conceivably could be skewed. And so that was acknowledged by the admin team that, you know, what's something that's reliable for us to be able to present, just as an aggregate? We didn't want to get down to granular information, but we really needed to be able to present, paint a picture for the school committee and for the public to have an understanding that we, you know, we need to get our kids on campus, we need to be with them. We have an outstanding team of educators, and they're gonna be far better than in-person than they are remote, and families who are doing graded remote have the option of staying remote as long as the pandemic is around.
Well, that being said, the report cards didn't change at all from in-person to remote, you know, so I can tell you one area that was graded was respective facilities. He's in my living room. So, you know, just to put that out there. That's it.
Okay.
Okay, I think I need just to make a few comments. I think it, I think a lot of points that were made here are really important, and I think this is really certainly time and maybe pastime. I agree with what Brian said in terms of as educators, I was an educator for thirty-four years. I still feel like I'm an educator. The personal connection between teacher or teachers and students are the utmost importance. It's what makes children succeed. There's, you can look at studies, you can look at anecdotal records. Students need that connection. I'm not saying that there isn't some connection by computer. I know people are working really hard to make that connection, but for some children, I'm sure that doesn't do it. The other thing that we've always known as educators is children all learn differently. There's so many needs, especially, again, young children. Those are the ones I taught. And you have to be able to be so flexible in terms about what young children need to learn anything effectively. And I don't know how that can be accomplished on a computer. I just don't, as hard as you work. That tactile, that children, young children need tactile experiences. They need auditory and visual, and they need a combination of things. And if a child can't attend to the visual or doesn't hear the auditory well on a computer, how do you compensate for that? It isn't that people aren't trying, it isn't that it isn't possible, but children are all different, and there's no way we can be meeting all the needs of all the children as well as we should. And I think this just highlights that, and I think it's a call to action. I think it really is. Okay. Anyone else about the information in general and otherwise?
Mike has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I blinked. Mike?
I just wanna reintroduce Sebastian, because I know we're not gonna figure any of this out tonight. But additional years for high schoolers is another possibility. I raised that. I didn't want to try and get into a bunch of stuff, because I know we need to sort a whole bunch of stuff out, but I'm concerned about losing, concerned about ways of providing opportunities, and additional years is one of those available to us on some level.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if we could discuss and hopefully vote on Brian's suggestion of having authorizing early release days for the rest of the 2020-2021 school year on Wednesdays, correct, Brian? They are now early release days for elementary? Is that correct?
Yep.
And we would like to expand it. It seems to include the upper levels as well, middle school and high school.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Bill? Do I have a second?
Second.
Heather, thank you. Any discussion about that? Cassie?
I just had a quick question. Will this affect the time on learning requirements, Brian?
No. No, we're far above the thirty-five hours in ten days, even with the, you know, that was one of the things that also that students shared with me when I had the meeting with the high school kids was, you know, they're on all day long, and one of the other things that we need to find a way to do is, in particular at the high school, I think it's a little bit easier at the elementary school, but high school and middle school to try to find a way to provide just a little bit more passing time for bio breaks and screen breaks in between classes. And so we'll have to do that creatively, but that shouldn't impact that time on learning number either.
Thanks. Any other questions or discussion about it? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
It looks like we're unanimous. My computer was a little odd, but it looks like we have it unanimously. Thank you.
Diane's hand, did she need to say?
I just had to try to acknowledge sort of the energy in the room and the work of this committee, the work of administrators. If I keep talking, I might end up losing my emotional composure as well. It's been a really hard year for a lot of our families. It's been a really hard year for a lot of our students, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I can appreciate what, you know, Brian and our administrative team and our teachers are trying to do, but it's very hard to see that data and to sit with it and not feel like throwing up or crying, honestly, because we didn't come to this work because we don't care. We didn't come to this work and put in these hours because we don't want to see this happening for our children. So it's very unusual times, and I just want to, again, acknowledge the work of this committee, acknowledge the work of this team. And I do believe that, you know, some of the suggestions that Brian had to offer, I do see there a way of turning things around, but relationships are key, the relationship this committee has with each other and the work that we're doing in this community, the relationship that our teachers have with our students. And so I just, it's hard to hear information like that and just kind of move on to the next topic. So I just wanted to be able to acknowledge kind of what's, you know, in our virtual rooms here, if you will. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you all.
Yes, we have one more item, equity among schools. I don't, anyone have anything on that at the moment?
Jane, sorry. I just wanted to put this out there. I emailed Brian earlier in the week, and I don't want to get into a big discussion about this. But down the road, I think maybe we should talk about just having some sort of platform for set communication among the schools, so there's not different messages coming from different places for families. I feel like this is deja vu because we've had this conversation before, but I do think that that has to do with, you know, equity among schools. So in the future, I think we should discuss that more.
Okay, that, I'll write that. Anything else? Anyone would like to add about that? Okay, we need to approve the minutes of our December twenty-second meeting, which are included in your packet. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Bill, moved? Did I hear Heather's second?
Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion of the minutes? All those in agreement? Okay, it looks unanimous. I'm not sure, Timmy, I don't necessarily see your square right now.
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was muted and I forgot to unmute it.
Happens a lot. We're all gonna get T-shirts that say that because we all need them. Dates of next, any agenda requests, please let us know. Our next meeting is next Tuesday. We won't necessarily have an agenda planning meeting ahead of time because that is basically a meeting just to go over the budget line by line. We'll have that ahead of time. People can send questions ahead of time to Joanne or afterwards at any point if they don't think to ask them then. So we will not, we'll set it up as a regularly scheduled meeting in the sense that it will be posted. There will be an agenda, but it won't have a lot of the other parts that most meetings have. It will just be a one-item agenda for that meeting, unless something comes up that we need to add that's critically time-sensitive. Though otherwise, we'll be planning for the regular meeting on the twenty-sixth. It'll be the next one. And those are the dates. On the nineteenth, we have our budget meeting. It's virtually again, and a regular meeting on the twenty-sixth, which will be virtual as well. Thank you all. Anything else before we have a motion to adjourn? Bill?
I just want to reiterate that Brian, Diane, Joanne, you all have my full support. I think you're trying very hard and looking at numbers and discussing it is way different than how you regard the people that are producing them. So thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I feel very lucky to be here. I feel very lucky to work with the people that I work here. I'm very impressed with this group of educators and teachers across the district. And I can't wait to actually see children because I miss them, and I think they're still our greatest asset. I think it's really important that we stay together as a school community is, even as we argue and get upset with one another, because that's how we're strongest.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thanks, Bill.
Second.
Any discussion about that? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all.